And so that's been great. What we're going to do is we're going to add in the
Lindbergh School's Board of Education Workshop number 1540 is now called order. Meetings are fully open in person as well as live streams on the district's YouTube channel. And accordance with the most recent health guidance, the St. Louis County Department of Health and City of St. Louis Department of Health, face coverings will be required to all attendants, even if you are vaccinated. Just for your information, our workshops aren't formative presentations between the cabinet team, the Board of Education, providing information to us during these workshops. Administrators can share information, seek input, and answer any questions that the Board might have. Citizen comments are not included on workshop agendas, so if you wish to address the Board, you can stick around for the regular meeting, which starts at 7:00 p.m. All right, so we'll go to 2.0. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy.
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have two discussion items on the workshop agenda this evening. We'll begin with Dr. Lake and Communication Covenant.
Sure. So back in 2018, when we came in and did the transition, we were talking about communication. And that was something that had been shared with the Board in the survey, looking for the new superintendent qualifications, characteristics, and those things. So we developed this Communication Covenant, the Board did, back in 2018. And, you know, prior to the pandemic, we kind of reviewed this every once in a while in a workshop. And it just kind of, you know, reminds us how we communicate with each other, how the Board communicates with citizens, how administration and Board communicate with each other. So we just wanted to, for the record again, just kind of put it out there. And we put it in the Friday packet, and I just kind of opened it up to the Board members that if, you know, if there's anything on this list that you've reviewed that you would like to change or add. Again, a lot of our documents are living documents. They aren't set in stone, so there are some things up there that, you know, that we need to, you know, always make sure that we're doing and making sure that we're doing a very clear, that we're very clear on our communication with one another in our community. So I just think in this environment we're in right now, I think it's really important for us to kind of re-center ourselves on these covenants that we had agreed upon back in 2018 and continued review in 19 and 20, and now in 21. So I'll open it up to the Board for any kind of discussion.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments? I think we do, as a Board, we do a pretty good job of following these things we've established. And if not, we further discuss them, so if there's nothing else.
Yeah, and if there's something, you look at it and say, hey, you know, I want to throw this out there, we can, you know, put it back out there to the group that, hey, we're going to make this adjustment to it, things like that. But, you know, again, I think something I would just like to highlight on there that I jumped out as I reviewed them is, you know, this work has to be fun. We have to remember that, that, you know, we're in this and it needs to be fun. And, you know, we have lots of things going on right now in our environment, but just remember that, you know, we're educating kids, and educating kids should be fun and being a part of that. So that's just what I would, I would like to kind of remind everybody, because sometimes right now, it's, you know, we've had some challenges, obviously, for the last 18 months. And so we want to make sure we refocus that and remember to have fun, so.
I was just going to say, through all of these, the different sub with communications with Board, with parents, with staff, et cetera, one thing that always comes fresh to my mind from these would be the committees that we rotate even to have more voices and diverse opinions and things like that. So it goes right from all these covenants, because we mention it then in each committee work, whether it's with staff or parents. And I like that we've even folded in some more students, you know, like with the foundation work and some other things. So excellent.
I think what stood out for me was positivity. And I checked to make sure it was in each document. Would prefer it's moved up higher on the list, but that's the, I looked for that, so.
Any read to hear that? Someone said, open the list.
I think that's important. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm having fun, in case you.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
All right. So 4.02, we'll go to Compass Updates, and I think Dr. McKinney in Human Resources will begin, so.
Did you want to, do you want to overview?
That's fine, Brian, we can go ahead. Just with COVID and just how it's kind of really, for the last 18 months, has really driven our work, we wanted to kind of take a moment to show how this work for the past 18 months has kind of overlaid all four of our areas with our chiefs, with our communications, and teaching and learning, and human resources, and finances. And so we're going to kind of go through some, this presentation's a little more tactical than we'd like to be. You know, when you think back to pre-pandemic workshops, they were really more about the innovation and the learning. And we're going to do some of that today, too. But, you know, it was really, that was the focus. We tried to stay a little bit out of the tactical stuff, that's the day-to-day kind of things. It's not necessarily so exciting, but we just felt like, we just wanted to kind of just bring it all kind of together of how one thing is impacting one part of the organization as with the other part of the organization as a result of this pandemic that we find ourselves still in, that we're navigating. And again, I think a lot of people think it's over, but it's not. I mean, it's still real. If you talk to our teachers and our kids, the stress and things that are going on there as a result of the environment we're in, I think it's real. And so hopefully, what, things are getting better, and numbers are getting better, and more people are getting vaccinated, and all of those things. And so those are all positive. And so hopefully, we'll keep moving in that direction of, you know, back to normal. So with that, we'll kind of turn it over to you, Brian, and HR is up first.
Okay. So if you'll go to our, thank you, Colin, you're on the exact right slide. The first three topics are work that we're doing that is impacted by COVID, or that we are hoping to positively impact our schools during COVID. And then the last few items are, you know, the work that must continue even during a pandemic. So I would simply say before we begin that a lot of us in May, as we planned this year, we thought, okay, we had that COVID thing, we did that, that's over. Let's plan for 2020, 21, 22. And man, how much fun was that, to plan a regular year, a normal year? You could see excitement in teachers' faces at the end of last year, you could see it in kids' faces. My own children asked, hey, next year, normal, homecoming, sports, all that stuff. And so we went into this year with that feeling. Enter the Delta variant. And I think that really put a cloud over, you know, some of the enthusiasm, because last year in May, it felt like light was at the end of the tunnel. And then by September, it didn't feel like light was at the end of the tunnel any longer. That stress is real, our teachers feel it, our kids feel it. And so we're going to talk a little bit about, tonight, about how we can hopefully support those people during a very difficult time, but also be enthusiastic and be forward-looking and continue our very important work. So with that, our first item is a COVID-related item. I'd like to turn it over to Jessica Franklin. Before I do that, I should introduce the team here tonight. Excited to have them here. These are three members of our HR team. We have Jessica Franklin, our lead nurse, and she is, wow, what a job. We're excited to have Jamie Covato, new to our team this year. She's our Executive Director of Human Resources, and she does a lot of really important work with our classified staff. And then Director of Benefits, Ann Werthen, is here tonight to talk about wellness, how we can support mental health, as well as some ongoing work, which is renewing our insurance for our employees. So we're going to start tonight with Jessica to talk about our staff's vaccination percentage to this point, and a little bit about clinics and opportunities that we're providing to help more and more people become vaccinated. No, it is.
Okay. Okay, so a little bit about our vaccination percentage. So at the end of the year in May, we were looking at about an 85% vaccinated percentage for our staff members. Whenever we look at the data right now, it's sitting right around 80%. And we think that that change can mostly be accounted for with taking away our retirees and all of our temporary staff that we had that were vaccinated last year. All of our vaccination status reports, those are all voluntarily given to us by our employees. We don't require them to report. And so since that's voluntary, we don't have everyone in the system. To date, though, in doing our contact tracing, we've only had four of our staff members that have been quarantined due to exposures. And so typically, whenever we do the contact tracing, if we have staff members who we don't have, we end up finding out that they are, in fact, fully vaccinated. And fully vaccinated people do not require any kind of quarantine. And then that moves us on to our vaccine clinics. So we've had lots of opportunities for our staff members and community and students to get vaccinated here on site. In the spring, we had separate clinics for staff, community, and students. I think we were the only school district that pulled off a student clinic before the end of the year. We did that the end of May. We just had a vaccine clinic last week. We have two more, or this week, sorry. We have two more coming up next week. And then we have two planned for November, anticipating our five- to 11-year-olds getting approval. So that's what we have coming so far. And does anybody have any questions about any of that?
All right. Thank you, Jessica, being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Another piece, very rarely do we, do we change pay rates in the middle of a school year. But as we've talked about with the Board and with our teachers, substitutes, due to the labor shortage, COVID, a lot of reasons, substitutes are in extremely short supply. And if, there's a link there, Colin, if we could click on that pay rate update link. Tonight, in the Board's main agenda, oh, there you go. I don't have, didn't give you access, I'm sorry. I know that you all have seen this, it's in the, it's in Board Docs in the main section, so you can go back to the regular presentation, Colin. We are asking the Board to approve an increase, not only to our daily rates, but also to add some tiered rates. And we did a, we did a market study of our substitute rates, and we found out that we were lagging, in some cases, the very, the very bottom of the districts we compete with. And so tonight, we're recommending an immediate increase to that. It would, it would take effect as soon as the, as soon as the vote happens, we've got advertisements ready to roll to advertise that our pay rates have increased. You know, not having enough substitute teachers adds to that stress level in buildings. Principals have to scramble to cover. We have to, you know, really ask teachers to do more than they would normally do to help cover their colleagues. And so this is one step, we think, that will at least alleviate our sub-s shortage here at Lindbergh. The pay rates, when we make these updates, will put us in fourth out of 11, rather than 11 and 11 in some cases. And we'll also provide some incentives for people to be here often and have, and be loyal to us. There's some kind of, after so many days, you get a pay, a pay raise. And then also, we're going to provide a increased rate for our own retirees, who we know them, we know how good they are, and we want to entice them to come back and help us out. So that document will be for your consideration and approval tonight, and we think that it will help at least alleviate, it won't, it won't fix it. We've talked to districts who pay extraordinary amounts, and they still have problems. So this won't fix the problem, but I think it will alleviate. So happy to answer any questions about that item. If there are none, I appreciate the Board's support. I know our teachers do as well. We'll transition into, we talked about stress in our buildings. What can we do to support our staff, our teachers, and our employees' mental health? So if we can go to the next slide, Ms. Covato is going to speak about mental health supports and initiatives in place.
Good evening. So one of the pleasures I've had the last couple of weeks is working with benefits and with Ann and Kim, along with learning their wellness advocates assigned for each building. They have some plans in place for the school year to help staff for well-being. First off, there is a well-being advocate assigned to each school building, and those advocates will meet quarterly with Ann and myself and Kim, and with a well-being coordinator. So a well-being coordinator is someone who is in the works right now. We've partnered with Hays, and Hays has presented us with several different organizations to partner with to hire a part-time well-being coordinator. And right now, we're looking at that individual working about 15 to 20 hours per week devoted to the Lindbergh School District, possibly more hours after a couple of our Zooms and interviews we participated in the last week. Our hiring goal with this individual is to secure partnership with someone who not only works with school districts, but works outside into the corporate world, so also works with hospitals and healthcare and in the business world, to bring their health and well-being ideas to Lindbergh schools. What could, what are best practices in all organizations that we could provide to our employees? So hopefully, by the end, I would say the end of November, we should have someone secured.
Hopefully sooner.
Yeah, sooner than later, because we just acquired our partnership with Hays. And Hays connected us with the individuals to interview for these positions, and we've been conducting those interviews. So once we have that individual secured, then one of their job responsibilities will be to work with our well-being advocates in every building. And every month during a faculty meeting, that well-being advocate can present the tools and resources to our staff that the well-being coordinator is providing. Also, too, we are making a transition into leaving EA Plus, which is, is known as PASS. And in January, we're looking, we've looked at four different vendors that Hays bid out for us. And during our interview processes, the one we have decided to secure a partnership with is called CureLink. And it's an online platform that will be, I want to say, Lindbergh branded, and employees will be able to go on into the platform and secure, whereas right now with EA, EA Plus or PASS, they can receive three counseling sessions. Now we'll move from three to six for free, and they'll be able to utilize a counselor either via Zoom, via text, via phone, or in-person. And I think that that live link is in there, so you guys can take a look at that. It's just a basic model. But what I found, or our team found, is extremely user-friendly, is they, our staff can go in and read individual biographies about therapists and counselors, and then they can schedule a appointment with whomever they see fits, is a good fit for them to talk with. And they have appointments in their calendar within a week. So it's not like you're going to call, and right now, we're waiting a couple of weeks to get in. It's, it's pretty universal to where they can get in within a week's time because of the, the individuals that they provide for support. But the goal for that, that I felt like was a big one, is they're moving from three free sessions to six. And then also, on the, the hub or the portal will be all kinds of different wellness articles and different practices and things that our team, our advocates can meet as a team. And hopefully, when we're in a world that we can get together, we can talk about 5K runs and different things that we can do as a district and a community for our staff. And I think that is all. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions about that work? This is, we've had PAS for quite some time, and it was time to take a look at that, like we've done with all of our vendors, and this was a good process. We learned a lot, and we feel like that CureLink is going to really provide some outstanding service to our, to our staff. And it's all free, so that's, that's the best, the best part. And these, these programs don't just offer counseling, I mean, they'll do, they help you with wills, and they help you with, you know, the things that are out there in life that can get in the way of, of, you know, your thinking about work, so we can help with that, and they're free, free resources. So thanks for sharing that.
I think another thing that we discussed today that's new is our HR and Business Department meets every Thursday as, as a team, and we decided to take our team meetings out on the road. So once a month, we're going to a building, and we discussed today, what can we do knowing that our teachers are under a lot of stress? What can we do to thank them? Because when we walked through Kinnearly last week, we were in classrooms and hallways and seeing the workings of the building. And we've decided now that what we'll do whenever we come to our meetings at their schools, we're going to bring, you know, Gus's pretzels, or cupcakes, or donuts, or just something nice to thank them for hosting us. So that was another thing. I mean, I know it's small, but it's a big one to a teacher that's living in a stressful world right now.
Part of our wellness program is to deliver junk food to our.
Yeah, it is, it is. Hey, come on, I know, right?
Yeah, we'll make that.
We'll play a walk outside, and we'll feel better about it.
Other than the, the monthly meeting, can you talk a little bit more about the role of the well-being advocate in each building?
So the well-being advocate, the, the goal that we want this individual, like I said, this is kind of an interview process, and we're learning, is that they'll have a structured system to where they can present to our advocates, to where they present to staff that, here are some wellness things you can do inside the building, whether it's yoga classes, or, you know, something that's online, a building challenge. Or here are some online resources, and start promoting that CureLink hub. So we're wanting that wellness coordinator to come in and bring ideas for our building advocates to get our buildings and our teachers involved with stress relief tactics. And what does that look like? Because I'm definitely not a well-being or stress expert by any means. But these individuals that we're interviewing are, and they have structured ways to deliver ideas to our advocates. So, you know, like right now, we're just meeting, and everybody has great ideas, but I feel like from the conversations we're having right now, it's, it's going to be more of a structured approach that they can bring back. Okay, well, here are these five big ideas that you can bring back to every building and even presentations. So just handing those out and giving them tools to go back to their buildings to help their staff.
And the advocates are a stipend position, they're teachers that are interested in this, they, they earn a stipend that's paid through our, through our benefits fund. And, you know, one of the things that's, it's, it's great to get resources in place, but if no one accesses those resources, they do very little good. And so one of the biggest challenges is to make people aware of the resources. And so we've reserved time in staff meetings for that, what building wellness advocate to share what they learned from the, from this expert that will be devoting a lot of their time to our district. And that way, we think that'll increase the awareness, which is really the first step after you secure the, the resources.
You're welcome. Well, like I said, it's, you know, we realize our teachers are, you know, in a, in a not-so-awesome place right now, when they want it to be. And putting someone out there who is working, their hands are in the school world, but they're also in business and healthcare, they're going to bring some ideas that us educators, teachers, wouldn't, wouldn't think of. So that's what we're, we're hoping, anyway, with this, with this hire. Thank you.
And you might have already said this, Jamie, but just curious about this CureLink. I was kind of just browsing right here on the line. Is it all online right now, or are there any in-person?
Right now, I believe they're, they do both.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so you can schedule appointments, you can either choose the in-person, or you can choose virtual. But the hub is, is more all online, where they have, you know, articles and different ideas you can do at home with your family, or exercise activities and stuff like that. But yes, there is an in-person component, if someone chooses to see a counselor in person.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Okay, well, we will keep moving right along. Our next slide, we're going to turn it over to Ann Werthen. This has been a really busy time for employee benefits. You'll remember that we had been with CBiz for a great deal of time as our insurance broker. We did, went through the bid process, ended up with a different company, Hays. And so that transition has been successful, but it's obviously been time-consuming. And as they come in, they are helping us, you know, review all of our programs, our benefits, our offerings. We didn't feel like this was a great year to make a lot of changes. I don't think throwing benefits changes at employees in a year like this was wise. And so I think what you'll hear from Ann tonight is that there's not a lot to see here, it's mainly the same kind of things. We met a couple of times with NEA about that strategy, and they fully agreed that this was not the year to make aggressive changes to the program. And it's a good program. It's, it's, it runs in the, you know, it runs in, in the black every year, and it's healthy. So I'll turn it over to you, Ann.
Okay, so we did start with Hays on 7-1 officially. So they've only been with us for a short period of time, but they've done a lot of work for us in that time period. They did put all of our products out to bid for everything. And I'll go through some of what happened with that marketing of our products. And we did realize savings pretty much across the board when we took a look at everything. Our medical fund in total is going to save about $134,000, which is great. That comes from various places, including their fees. We saved about $60,000 in their fees to our medical fund. We also saved money on our stop-loss premium and our COVID services and a bunch of things, but total $134,000, which we were pleased with. Savings to Lindbergh, we were able to realize a move of about $208,000 to the operating budget, because we were able to look at our savings to our medical fund and realize we have a pretty healthy fund. So we did agree to drop the rates for Lindbergh for what they pay for employees' medical. And so that will move about $208,000 to operating, to our operating budget. And we feel very confident that's a good move. So the next piece would be the savings to employees. And total, we assume about $167,000 savings to employees from various places also. So all in all, I, I feel like Hays did a great job with our marketing. We were very pleased with what they brought to the table. They had a lot of ideas, and like Brian said, this was probably not the year to realize all of those things, but we'll keep all of them on the table for future years to take a look at the other items that they brought to the table. Some of the things that happened in the marketing, we realized that our co-pays were a bit too high for the physician and for the specialist, so we did decide to lower those to $25 and $50 on our PPO plans. Basically, the move was made because we weren't competitive with other school districts. That's one. The second piece to that is that you pretty much discourage people from going to the doctor, and we don't want to do that. So we decided to bring those back down into a good place for employees on those co-pays. We did make the decision to increase the urgent care co-pay. And the reason for that is because in the marketplace right now, urgent care is a pretty high bill. They're, they're up, they're going up all over the place, their costs have gone up quite a bit. And so we increased that co-pay from $50 to $75. It was not a huge jump, but we're hoping that encourages people to see their regular physician when that is an appropriate place to go. So that in addition to the fact that if you're on the qualified high-deductible plan, you're paying a lot of money for that urgent care visit that you aren't planning on paying. So that was the other thing. We did, in the process of all this marketing, realize several carrier changes. We changed our stop-loss carrier and our voluntary benefits carrier from the Hartford on the voluntary benefit side, and United Healthcare on the stop-loss side to Sun Life, mainly because they saved us quite a bit of money, and their parameters for their renewal were a lot better than what we had. So there is just no reason not to do it. We did change our EAP provider from PASS to CureLink with a savings, but also with much better, I guess, access for our employees to take advantage of what the EAP provider has to offer. So that was another change that we thought was a pretty good decision. And then we had to change our FSA. with, um, much better, I guess, access for our employees to, uh, take advantage of what the EAP provider has to offer. So that was another change that we thought was a pretty good decision. And then we had to change our FSA and Cobra administration because we had that through C-Biz and we had to change that. So we changed that to PNA. That was on the recommendation of Hays and we saved money on that also. Um, the big, um, probably the biggest change for employees this year is that we're introducing a program that's called RX and Go. It's a prescription mail order program that is voluntary to employees. They do not have to participate. But if they do and they find their, that their medication is available through RX and Go, they will pay nothing for that medication. And on the flip side, we're saving money. They're sourcing these medications through the United States and Canada, which is great. Uh, so we're able to save some money for employees and us. There's just no reason not to do it. Uh, it's totally separate from United Healthcare, so, um, they wouldn't be dealing with that. It seems like it's a, a good, uh, simple process for employees. I did go through the process myself. It seems very simple to do it. So, um, it, it's probably more about the communication to employees at this point to, to really get that communicated out so that they realize what is there and available to them. So, um, that will be going out with annual enrollment information, which will be Monday, provided the board approves our benefit package tonight. So, uh, I think that's pretty much it, Brian.
Thanks, Ann. Any questions for Ann? I know that's a lot of information, but, um, it's all good news. Hays has been, I know that we call this the honeymoon period still, but they have made a great first impression.
They're, they've been great to work with. I will say that.
Thanks, Ann. I would just ask on that RX to Go, how often they communicate with staff members, any staff members? Do they always send a paper copy in the mail? That's just something that I've been familiar with. And so just ask after the employee says, "No, thank you. I want to continue to go to Walgreens or CVS or something." How often does the RX to Go keep bothering them?
Well, I think it's probably more about how often we bother them possibly. Uh, and I would take guidance from, you know, employees. We usually get good feedback on things like that. If, you know, sometimes we find that communication coming from HR isn't as well-received as going through their, usually their well-being advocate is great because they know their building, they know their people. So, um, it's probably something that we would feed through the well-being advocate again as an option for employees to use. Um, so I think it's more about how we communicate and not necessarily how RX and Go communicates to them.
Yeah, and you're doing it educating, educating them about it, which is great and all through the wellness being and things like that. It's just there have been some instances where it's been a text message, a phone call, a letter home, a text message, a phone call, a letter home. So just curious, just because we haven't done that piece of it yet.
Yes.
Something to look out for.
Are you talking about RX and Go specifically or?
No, I'm not. I'm talking about just several companies like that.
Okay, gotcha.
This is Express Groups. It's a different company, but there's multi-layered and it's frequently and often. So I'm just suggesting to ask RX to Go how often they communicate directly with our employees.
I will definitely do that.
Thank you.
It wasn't something that I had on my radar, so that's a good question.
Thanks.
And then, Ann, is this for employee only or if the employee carries a family member, are they eligible for it as well?
It's any member enrolled in one of our plans. So, uh, even retirees, if they're enrolled in our plans, they can use it too. I mean, it, it saves us money, so it's, it's really a good program for us to promote. Um, if it works for them and it works for us, there's no reason not to.
Any chance board members can be on there? Just kidding, just kidding. No, we just volunteer, yeah.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Um, we'll keep moving if everybody's good. Um, some of our work that is not COVID-related is handbooks. Um, employee handbooks are important. They, um, carry a lot of statutory regulations and, um, they're certainly reflective of board policy and they're a great resource for the staff. They are typically updated about every five years, uh, unless we're statutorily obligated to put things in. Um, but, um, I would say one of the, the things that, um, Jamie Cavato's been able to do in her short time here is really jump in and, um, some of these handbooks, the revision process has been ongoing and she's jumped in and kind of tied up the loose ends and gotten them done. So, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about some completed handbook updates and then one that is in process. So I'll turn it over to Jamie to talk about the Classified Staff Handbook, which has just recently been completed.
Yes, so like Brian said, best practice is to have a five-year review of our handbooks, unless obviously law dictates that we make changes otherwise. So one of the tasks that we began when I started was reviewing and updating our classified handbook. And basically it was cosmetic revisions and things that needed to be revised that were outdated, um, in terminology. And we started that process in August and September with the HR team. And then just last week, um, I met with a committee of a member of every section of our classified staff to review, um, our revised handbook or updated handbook. And what they're doing is providing my team with feedback of questions from their department. So my goal from our committee meeting was for them to bring back the preliminary handbook. And if there were any questions, I wanted to make sure it's user-friendly, that our employees can turn to page six and completely understand leave and processes and things like that. And our implementation projected date to have it live is in November. So that one is checked off the list and the nurses classified, or nurses handbook is next. So that's where we're at.
We can go to the next, uh, slide. We've got a couple more nurses is on there. Uh, since you brought up nurses, I'll start with that one. Last year, you likely remember that our nurses did formally organize and they're represented by NEA, the National Education Association now, and that group is called LAHP. However, um, that CBA is not the handbook and sometimes those are confused. The CBA for the nurses that we negotiated last year, um, has to do with some very finite things such as, um, leave, salary, um, those kinds of things. The handbook is more of a resource to go for day-to-day operations, um, you know, how do I fill out this form? Uh, when is my, um, you know, when is my report time? When is my leave time? It's really nuts and bolts. And so, um, when Jessica and Jamie reviewed, reviewed the Nurses Handbook, we, you know, we've noticed that a lot of what it needs is, is, is what you might call house, housekeeping. It's not a lot of major content changes. But, um, that work is set to begin soon and Jamie and Jessica Franklin, our lead nurse, will be guiding, uh, that process. And it'll be exactly like how Jamie described the classified. There'll be lots of input from staff and meetings and, um, a back and forth until we're all agreed that it's a, a document that can be used and, and, and helpful to employees. The ECE Teacher Handbook, uh, Charlene Ziegler and I, who's out there in the audience tonight, Dr. Ziegler and I worked, uh, with the ECE teachers. And that's part of our larger, um, reorganization of ECE. This is part of that. And we wanted our ECE teachers really to have the same, um, handbook language as our teachers. And so we worked to largely mirror the K-12 Teacher Handbook. Uh, it's not exactly the same because ECE is a little different than K-12. It just is. Um, there are some responsibilities and things that you have when you're working with two-year-olds that you don't have when you're working with 17-year-olds. And so it is a little different, so we made sure that we were, we customized it to the level it needed to be customized for ECE and their, um, you know, and their unique, um, characteristics. But it is largely K-12 that was welcomed by the staff. They were thrilled to be, not feel like outsiders and others and they feel like, hey, this, we're part of the same team. So that's been good. I'd say one of the, the biggest change that I would highlight is that we had, um, our part-day teachers, um, frankly, just the way the schedule worked, um, the nature of their work, they didn't have planning time. So we did add, um, 50 minutes to their day of planning time. It required to be paid. So their contracts are in the board's voting agenda tonight. There's four people that are impacted by this and their, their contracts will go from point five to point six. So it's a, it's a minor change, but much appreciated by this group. Um, and I know that they are appreciative, uh, for the board's consideration. And then, um, again, same, same program. We met with these teachers to gather their input, share revisions, and, uh, that was a very positive and collaborative process. I think Charlene's nodding her head back there. I didn't, but, so. And that's where we were with handbooks. Uh, we've got more to do. Um, facilities is still out there. Um, we have, um, you know, we, we've, we've got, of course, our teachers that we, that we talk about every year. So this work doesn't really stop, but, uh, these are three that are going to be done this year and checked off of our compass goal for this year. Any questions about handbooks in general? Okay, we will keep moving. Our next, um, piece, this is also a, um, Jamie Cavato project. And she is working to make our workers' compensation reporting and, um, and benefit process much more efficient. No changes to benefits, nothing like that. This is just going to, um, it's going to make this online. It's just going to do some really good things for the employees. So Jamie, back to you.
So currently, um, our workers' comp process is on paper. So an employee fills out a paper incident report. It's uploaded and sent, sent our way. Um, so we want to make this process more efficient for several reasons. Um, efficient practices and work comp processes. Having it online and moving it to electronic will expedite the phone calls and the movement when we have to contact, um, health, health, uh, health professionals, um, who need to see the employee, depending on what injury, what type of injury the employee has. Um, but one of the biggest pieces to this that we're pretty proud of is whenever the employee completes the online form, it will be automatically linked to TalentEd. And TalentEd is our human resources system where we house all the information on all of our employees. And one of the things that benefits our department with that is it's going to allow us to track claims and evaluate our safety practices. And the safer our work environment is, the less work comp claims we'll have, the less work comp claims we have, the more cost-effective that is to the school district. Um, so making that form live is going to be a world of improvement for us to collect data and evaluate, um, our safety practices. And our goal for this, whenever, um, we do move to it online, Colin, I don't know if you can move to the next slide. So this is just an example of what the form will look like and it will be several different layers. We took our current incident report and put it all online. Um, so it'll still follow the same contact, contact practices, um, if an employee is injured on the job. Um, but again, it's one of the things where we can now keep track in our system, information on claims and employees and improving our safety practices. And one of the, uh, the big picture with this is we will train our supervisors on completing the online forms and then the supervisors will train, um, our employees. So again, we're moving from paper to an online system. And again, it's, the goal is to improve safety practices. And in order to evaluate your safety practices, you've got to have data on your work comp claims. So this is a way that we're going to have that and I'm hoping to have that done by November, too. Check that one off the list. Any questions?
Questions about work comp process?
I do.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, thank you for sharing that. So just in looking at that, you said the supervisors would be trained at first. Can they also be the one to enter the data? I'm just imagining the workers' comp claim, like if somebody's not able to.
Sure, absolutely.
Or it takes them a little longer with some computer skills or something?
Absolutely, yeah. They will partner. So like now, when it's on paper, usually their supervisor will help them complete the paper form, but they'll be able to complete the online form with a supervisor as well. So it's not just put on the employee to go into the portal and figure it out on their own. So there will be a supervisor, a contact person on their shift. So say it happens during third shift with a custodian, there will be a lead custodian on that night shift that could work with the employee who's hurt. And obviously, if it's an issue that needs like immediate health assistance, we're not going to say, "Hey, you have to fill out this form first."
Grab stocks, stop and fill out the form, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And so the other, I love that it's online. I love, and I guess I just would have more questions or figuring out about the TalentEd side, you know, because if I'm an employee too, it's also tracking. I would feel like maybe, well, now that's part of, it's on the same portal as my evaluation, like my incident report form on there. I don't know about keeping it separate, but tracking is very important.
I can answer that question. So TalentEd is a, is a large vendor that has three suites. And so the suites are, um, recruit and hire and it does, all it does is job, job postings. Um, we do our interviews through there. We do our recommendations and then that stops. And then, um, this would be housed in what is called records, TalentEd records. And that has to do with, like, we keep all of our employees' records in TalentEd. So this will be in the records side of TalentEd. And what you're referring to with evaluation is another suite called Perform.
Perform, yeah.
But they are, they're partitioned. I mean, they're all owned by the same, you know, TalentEd really is, is hire to retire, um, at Lindbergh, but there are partitions and they, they don't necessarily lead one into the other.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So it, it would be housed into their documents that have, like, their personal medical, you know, all the things that whenever we hire them would be put in there.
Great questions.
I'm just excited that's less paper.
Yeah, I know.
I heard that might make me happy, Dr. Lake.
Some of you don't know, but I'm a big fan of paper.
I was boastful about HR's not using paper and then Jamie comes along and immediately finds, "So I replaced, we're using paper."
Took Jamie like three months. It's taken you three years.
I know, right? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ignore that and move on.
Moving along, last slide.
All right, finally, uh, for us, uh, you'll hear all of us talk about something we're investigating. Um, the labor shortage has put a premium on, um, not only substitutes, but also we found, uh, positions clerical, custodial, facilities, specialized technicians such as A B A C, electrical, plumbing. Not only are these people hard to, to, to recruit, but then once they're here, you know, you, you have to keep them and, and there's a lot of turnover in these areas. And so we are investigating a classified longevity and retention plan. Um, we want to entice people to stay with us. We want them to stay at Lindbergh. And so, um, some of our market studies, um, districts have put in place ideas such as, um, providing compensation for unused accrued leave at separation. Um, you get that by being vested, so you require employees to have a vesting time after a minimum term of service. And so it gives, it gives people something to look, to work for. You know, you have to, the essential question is, "Yeah, I work at Lindbergh. It's a pretty good place to work. Why do I want to stay here 10 years?" We want to answer that question. So we, not only because you like to work here, but are there some other things that we can put in play that entice people to, to, to stay here at Lindbergh and not job hop? So, um, this is in the, again, very beginnings of, of thinking about, but we wanted you to know something that we're looking forward to. That's the Human Resources Report for tonight. I appreciate your time and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, and now onto the Teaching and Learning portion of tonight's, um, workshop. Um, as Maureen joins us at the podium, I just want to take a moment and, and remind the board of where we were a, a year ago, a year ago plus. Um, do you remember we had a director within Teaching and Learning position that had opened? And it gave us the opportunity to reorganize that position and to think about what we can do in support of students. And as a result, we shifted that director's position into two separate positions. One for Inclusion, Equity and Diversity, and then one also for Intervention Coordination, which has been a compass goal for us for a number of years as we continue to work on our multi-tiered systems of supports for our students. And as we're talking about, um, our work of, of Compass, we also can't, um, ignore the fact that in the time of COVID, intervention supports are a huge component of what we do and how we continue to support the academic and the social emotional needs of our students. So with that, it is my pleasure to turn it over to Maureen Stabler, who is our Intervention Coordinator, to talk through some of the work that she is doing in this role.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Thank you, Colin. Um, I just wanted to also say thank you so much. I'm really excited to be officially joining the Lindbergh team. Um, and I'm really looking forward to the work that I'm going to be doing with our staff. Um, so the first slide that you see here is just taken from the Missouri School Improvement Program, um, under the Teaching and Learning Standard VII, just specifically addressing multi-tiered systems of support as something that schools should be implementing. And so really just as a whole, a lot of the work that I'm going to be doing moving forward, um, right now is kind of looking at where we are with what different buildings are doing and what processes we have in place in the district and then really working to streamline those processes. those processes across all levels from PK to 12, and how we can kind of make things more efficient for staff and students so that we can really achieve the best learning outcomes for students. And some of what I've been doing is really trying to get in at all levels. So the classroom level, building level, and then looking more big picture at systems level to address not just academic progress for students, also social, emotional, and behavioral development for students. So one of the things that I've been doing is just going into classrooms and sitting in on conversations that teachers are having about specific students or grade level teams, looking at student data, and then really kind of working through what data do we have that tells us how students are making progress, and when we notice that students are not making growth, to really work with teachers to help them understand the data that is presented to them and that they're really the ones collecting, and then how we can use that to develop intervention plans that are personalized for students. That's okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Tonight, Matt.
Yeah, I know. So yeah, I was just saying, welcome Lindbergh, and you know, glad to see you're off to a, you know, a roaring start, as I think, you know, a lot of our new employees have been. I just had a question in terms of, you know, when you're out and you're discussing what's going on at the classroom level, what, what kind of data do you use? I mean, you know, so, you know, you mentioned data, student data. If you could just kind of describe for us what some of that data might be or it might look like.
Yeah. So some of it is just formative assessments that teachers are taking in the classroom. So it might be tests that they're giving, or just quick evaluations that they're doing of student progress. It could also be looking at some of our more standardized assessments, so N W E A, FastBridge, those tools that we're using to look at growth over time for students that are more normative measures of student achievement. And then also looking at the social emotional side, just taking into account, you know, teacher observations and reports, or if students are sharing things, how we can really work to support that whole child and really address needs academically and socially emotionally.
Yeah, so when you mention like, you know, normative data and so forth, so you're looking at what sort of like impressions and observations that the teacher sees then?
So the normative data would be thinking about FastBridge assessments.
I can't, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So normative assessments would be things that are standardized, like N W E A, which we administer to look at reading and math growth for students, or FastBridge, which is what we use to screen students for literacy K through 3rd grade specifically, and then beyond that when needed. And those are just standardized and comparing them to other students nationally and within Lindbergh to see how they're performing.
Sure, okay, all right, thanks. And so also, and I imagine, you know, beyond the normative data, you know, you're looking at, you know, just other, what, I mean, just you're looking at various data that's there, I mean, available in the classroom. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to determine is what is, for instance, with regards to social emotional issues, like what would you be looking for? What are some, what are some flags, I guess?
It could be teacher observations. We also pay attention to attendance, school discipline concerns. So if we just start to see patterns and concerns with students that tell a teacher that they might need to intervene to support a student, if they're getting any of our outside mental health services, you could need those sorts of referral services that we use.
Okay, well.
So it's, it's more anecdotal.
Yeah.
There's less normative assessments for that. A lot of teacher observations of, you know, situations in the classroom and things like that.
Well, thanks for that clarification. Don't think I'm just kind of needling you on this. I ask questions about, you know, how we, you know, pull our data together all the time.
Absolutely.
You know, and I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yeah, my pleasure. So beyond that work specifically in the classroom, I also have been collaborating, if you could go to the next slide, Colin, with building administrators to support their compass plans if they have goals towards providing student intervention, looking at, again, teams that get together within the buildings to look at student data, to determine what supports might be appropriate for students, and also really just kind of trying to bring together all those voices within the building to support students. And then thinking about how we can put all of that data into one place. We do have a tool that we're using called EduClimber, which is an online basically warehouse. It pulls in assessments from Tyler, or data from Tyler, from FastBridge, from N W E A into one place, and then it helps us to better track student data and what interventions we might be implementing, and how we can use that to inform whether students are making progress or not, and kind of be able to make those decisions in a timely manner to support students. And then, big picture, Dr. Lawson and I are kind of co-facilitating a coalition which has representatives from all of the buildings within Lindbergh, from PK all the way through 12th grade, that includes teachers, counselors, administrators, the school psychologists, really just kind of that comprehensive group of professionals who can come together to do some of that work on looking at the system as a whole. What are we doing that's working well? What structures do we have in place that are beneficial? And then how can we better use those structures to make decisions to provide good outcomes for kids when it comes to, like I said, academic and social emotional growth? And then the last thing is working towards providing resources for teachers that they have available to them in the classroom, so that when they don't know what to do and a student is struggling, what they could implement in the classroom during some of that small group time to support students. Working on, I've been working on a Canvas course that outlines kind of the process for the district, and then also has access to resources available to them to provide interventions for, when it's completed, it will have interventions for literacy, math, and social emotional supports. And then it also just kind of provides that outline and structure for what the process would look like and how they can kind of engage in that problem solving process to have good conversations about student performance and know what to do to move forward when they're struggling. And this is just the cover page of that course. So once it's completed, it's an interactive Canvas course with modules that talk about all of those different aspects that I mentioned.
I just want to take a minute to really address the fact that everything that Maureen is designing here through this process is designed for us to look at every student individually, and to look at their comprehensive development over time and their growth over time. So when we're thinking about kids, every single student is being not just assessed, but then we're determining, is what we're doing having an impact? And then if not, how do we go deeper in order to support those students? And all of those areas that help to build them into successful adults long-term. So it's, it's great work. It's, it's building a system. And then it's also, it's been great watching Maureen work with teachers about how to use this data, how to look at the data, and how to start developing plans of support for students.
Thank you. What other questions do you have?
It's great. Thank you, Maureen. I appreciate all this. I'm just teasing on slide number 17, which Colin is the one before this one. Let's not shorten M T S S. Like we just said in our communication covenants that we would avoid lingo jargon, et cetera. So, because it took me a minute to find that, and then I went back and saw these others, because the tiered system of support is awesome, and the whole platform that you're building with the Canvas thing is awesome. And just make sure that parents can understand it as well as the educators can.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the other component that we, as Dr. McKinnney referenced earlier, staffing is an ongoing challenge that we have within, within education. And while we've talked about classified staff in that regards, the long-term projections for teaching staff and certified staff is also an anticipated challenge. So one of the things that we've been really intentional with over the last couple of years in our collaborative partnership with St. Louis Center for Advanced Professional Studies is developing a Grow Your Own program of, for teacher development. So what we have tonight is a presentation from Dr. Zagora, our Executive Director of Secondary Education, and Erin McGrath, our, one of our high school teachers, as well as the leader of the CAPS program for the teaching careers, and then three students who are in the program to talk about how this is impacting future careers in education.
This isn't really my presentation. I'm truly a peripheral character here. That's why I'm on the edge of the table. So I'm going to hand things over here in a second to Mrs. McGrath and our students. But first, just wanted to introduce Erin McGrath, who has been a family consumer science teacher with us for several years and started the teaching careers strand with St. Louis CAPS. So we've been in the CAPS consortium for a few years now. We've had a couple dozen students that have been through their other programs in engineering, and their business program, their healthcare program. And so the Teacher and Careers program launched last year, which was a very difficult year to launch a new strand of a program. And so CAPS approached us and, and asked as a partner in the consortium, would we want to be part of the instructor team for CAPS? And so we were so happy that they asked, because we had a prime candidate already working at Lindbergh High School. And so really, this program, what it is and what it can become is due in large part to Mrs. McGrath and our students that have, have been building this program right along with her. So I'm going to let Erin explain a little bit about just what the teaching careers strand is, and then I'm going to turn things over entirely to Mrs. McGrath and our students to just give their impressions and experiences on the program.
Yeah, well, thanks for inviting us tonight. We appreciate it. These are high school seniors from all over the district. So we've, we have been there, out, visiting other schools a lot too. So like today, they were all at their practicum locations. So we're at Sappington like 50% of the time. We have 14 students in the program this year. We went from seven to 14. We're going to add another person at the semester who is, is going to work out great. So we'll be at 15 kids that all want to be future teachers. Or maybe they choose after spending this time that they don't want to be teachers.
Hopefully not after 14.
Hopefully not. Yeah, after they're scared of this, all the HR work. But no, they get to really experience everything from PK to 12. And we have students that, wow, I didn't know that speech pathologists exist. So now they're getting to see those things and shadow those professions. So it's been really exciting. I am just the bus driver. I am the facilitator. So I am just driving 100 miles an hour down the road, pushing them off the bus, as I tell them often. So it is their job to have those experiences in those classrooms. And we have a lot of great teachers in Lindbergh, but a lot of, like South County teachers that are willing to accept us. So it's been really exciting to watch. And these are three seniors that are stuck with me all year. And they get college credit for the course. We are through UMSL, so they can get six credits. So there's some advantages there too.
All right.
All right, questions?
So we're going to let you guys, let's maybe slide that between the two of you. And I will just say, you don't have to all answer all of these questions, but before you start answering them, could you each just introduce yourselves real quick, just your name and which high school you're from?
I'm Abby Combs, and I go to Lindbergh High School.
I'm Haley Watts, I go to Oakville.
I'm Ethan Cobal, and I go to Kirkwood.
All right, so who wants to take the first question? How is CAPS helping you prepare for a career in teaching?
Well, CAPS gives us a lot of opportunities. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we do practicums where we have a chance to observe and help. Today was the first one for me of this new teacher, where I took notes and had a lot of different ideas of how to teach, which I think is a lot more than a lot of students can have going into the college and then teaching, because we're getting a leg up on that and getting some different ideas of what we like, what we don't like, and how we think we could be a good teacher.
Number three, I think it's a lot better, in my opinion, because I'm not a school person. I can't sit in a classroom all day long. So this has like given me the opportunity to do something I actually have a passion for and help me gain experience through it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and talk about number two. We're in Sappington Elementary every Monday, and I know it's important. I've learned like a lot of the students need to get used to like having people they're not used to in their classroom, and it can help them like in the real world. And I know right now it's really hard for like teachers after COVID. So the, the teachers appreciate having someone in the room that they can count on, and then they can work like one-on-one with students who need more help.
An example of that would be on Monday, last Monday, there, my teacher at Sappington had this lesson that she was going to do. She wasn't going to be able to do it that day because she had a bunch of other stuff she had to do. But since I was there, I was able to help grade a few of her stuff, and then help her set up that lesson. So she was able to get through stuff, get to that lesson that day instead of having to wait till the next day to do that. So, yeah.
Are we good with questions?
What's been the best part so far? Adding a fourth question that you weren't prepared for. What's been the best part so far?
I guess the best part for me was, at first I thought I wanted to be just like a regular like teacher in a classroom. And I've learned like so many, there's so many more different like careers that you can have in schools that aren't just education. So I'm excited to like get out there and explore them. And I like looking at like, I can shadow all different kinds of teachers, and I've seen so many different grades so far. And also, I guess another really important part of CAPS is I can go through all of this, and I know I want to be something in education, but if I don't want to, I'm not wasting any money. I've already explored, like I've already done practicums, and I can just do a different, something else in college.
The best part for me was definitely being in my second grade classroom, because so far I've been in a first grade, second grade, and then sophomore and freshman. And I realize I love second graders, like they're so much fun. And that's, I know that's what I want to do.
For me, it was, what I really, my favorite part about CAPS honestly is how much flexibility there is, and how it's really on us to get things done. For example, with the practicums, we, our CAPS time is 12 to 2, but oftentimes it does not work out for the teachers. So getting that flexibility to like plan it out, that how it works with them, and how it works with our schedule, instead of just being strict to a CAPS schedule, but we can do what works, and that responsibility is kind of on us. That's nice. Also learned the opposite is Haley. I do not like second graders.
But do you like middle school science? Anybody?
Yeah.
Middle school science.
Yeah. So I learned I like middle school and high school, not, not second graders.
Ethan?
Any questions from the board?
Would you recommend this to other students? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I've actually already, there was a kid at my school who was interested in CAPS. I recommended it to him, and he's now pretty interested in doing it. He's actually debating between doing teaching and business, I think. He was like, can I do both?
Got to take English.
But yeah, I would highly recommend it to anyone. It's a really great experience.
I was talking, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. I was talking to some of my sophomore people in the class today, and they thought it sounded really interesting and something that they want to do in the next two years.
Is, is this a program that's offered only to seniors, or is it?
Juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors.
And we're an afternoon program. The other CAPS programs have a morning and an afternoon. It just, we, with the schedules and everything, it makes more sense for the education to be in the afternoon. Who knows what the future holds with that. But like Ethan was just saying, we have a lot more flexibility, because even at 12, it's like, oh, I'm eating lunch. Okay, well then Ethan, go at 12:30, stay a little bit later. And then they can also get A-plus hours if they stay and they help that teacher. So it actually creates a segue of an, you know, that invitation to engage in A-plus.
Well, I think, I think this is a wonderful program, and I can say so from kind of associated experience. Since, since my wife is a retired educator, does this professionally. She's at the university, she teaches at, but also as a staff member, she helps place student teachers in schools throughout the St. Louis area who are taking up education in college. And what we sometimes find is And what we sometimes find is those who are entering programs in education, you know, they get out in the field and they see what it is. And then they may have some second thoughts. I mean, some are very passionate, they'll follow through, you know, with their degree and get out there and teach and, you know. But what is so great about this is that you guys, even before that time, are kind of given that sneak peek at what teaching on the ground is about. And I think it's exciting, and I think someone mentioned that, you know, it does sort of help save time when you're thinking about a career, to be out there, you know, observing and so forth, or participating in some way beforehand, even before you get to college, I think it's a great program. Great deal.
What are the college credits that they get from UMSL? Like what?
So it's the beginner teacher credit and then an ed psych core. So they're part of Core 42, which was important because if, for instance, she's paying that $70 a credit hour through UMSL, which is way, you know, cheaper, but then decides not to pursue that degree in education, she can use that as an elective or as her side credit. So it's six credits through UMSL. And we do way more practicum hours than is required. And that's what we hear. It's, you know, they're doing 10 or 15 as their sophomore year. And I'm just going to use UMSL as an example. Oh, my gosh, we've done, you know, six this week. So we are far exceeding that experience in the classroom. And we've seen some things.
So for the students, thank you so much for coming and talking to us today. This is really exciting. And is there something that you would want to experience more of in this program or less of, if there's anything that comes to mind?
Um, right now, I think, I wouldn't say perfect, because I don't think anything is perfect. But I'd say pretty close to perfect. I really like how it is right now. And I think it's a hard time right now just because of COVID. But I think it's interesting. I get to talk, like, I know today I'm with a teacher, and we have tons of time to talk because they go on their lunch break. And I learned so much today. I watched her, you know, just put in her report cards. I just learned so much. And it's a hard time because of COVID, but I think that makes it really interesting. And if it were to happen, something happened again, I'd know how to deal with it.
I didn't pay her to say that.
Thank you so much. You're a great representation of your schools and of this program. And I am excited to see you continue to advocate for it with other students so we can watch it grow. Any other questions?
Just a quick one. I know I should know the Navigator by heart. Is this our only cadet teaching course, or do we have something separate?
Oh, we have an additional, it's just seventh hour cadet course at the high school. And they are, those students are placed in different Lindbergh schools throughout the district. So that's kind of where that started. We started that a few years ago. Ms. Glover in the fax department teaches that. I believe there's five or six students in it right now. In fact, one of those students is one of the students that I'm talking about that's transferring. She's can't get enough. She's at Sappington with Ms. Sears, I think. And she's like, I can't leave her. I have to keep going. So that's been really exciting, too. But yes, the hope is maybe that we would get, you know, those students that they have the flexibility in their schedule to continue. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I know we're getting short on time, so we're going to try to move pretty quickly through these next slides. Dr. Ziegler from Lindbergh Early Childhood Education is going to join me as we talk about the Early Childhood Special Education Task Force. This has been a compass goal for a couple of years as we have been evaluating our special education at early childhood and whether or not we wanted to consider moving from special school district to a Lindbergh-supported early childhood special education. So our task force started in September with a group of parents, teachers, administrators. And you can see here what our why was. Ultimately, we're really focusing on enhancing the systems of learning for early childhood special education. That is our biggest priority. And through that, we wanted to investigate whether or not providing those services through Lindbergh schools would provide greater benefit to our students than continuing with special school district. But in the end, the goal is just to improve the programs. I'm going to give you a little bit of a spoiler alert right now. After our meeting last week, the task force almost unanimously agrees that staying with special school district at this point is the right decision to make. And as we go through these slides, I think you'll see, you'll see the reasons why. So like any task force, we start with the design thinking process. We start with identifying what are the problems, empathizing with the various perspectives of people who are in those programs so that we can define what the concerns are, start to ideate or brainstorm solutions, develop those solutions, and then test whether or not they're working. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that we start with surveying. We surveyed our parents, and we used a Likert scale. And we asked quite a number of questions. This particular slide is focused on the effectiveness of the development of their child's IEP. So it was on a scale of five. When you look at these four questions related to goal setting, achievement of goals, revisions, the evaluation and the diagnostic process, you can see that the average was four or above in all of these different scenarios. So our families are feeling a sense of connectedness in the development of their children's IEPs. The next slide talks about communication with special education staff at the early childhood location. So again, on a Likert scale, we're getting a range of 4.04 to 4.5 in terms of responsiveness, relevant information being provided, timely information being provided. So our families are seeing the benefits of our partnership with Special School District for Early Childhood Special Education. And then this next slide is probably the most important. This comes down to how are our students transferring their learning? Ultimately, that's always what we want for our students. It's not just that they learn in the classroom, but we're seeing the impact of that learning outside of the classroom. So families were asked to what degree social emotional learning growth was seen outside of the school setting, to what degree was academic growth seen outside of the school setting. Moderate and significant growth from every single respondent, which again demonstrates that the work that we want to see happening on behalf of our students is happening. So that data made it really evident that we're doing great things for kids. Now, like any program, we know we had areas of improvement. And so as we go to the next slide, Charlene's going to highlight what those areas are.
Hello, everybody. So we discussed this as a task force and came up with these three broad areas where we would like to see improvements. And this was a task force that was well representing all levels and all stakeholders. So the first one, bridging ECSE and ECE program coordination. Really, that is, it's very simple, things like schedules and processes so that we can have professional learning together, for example. We've actually already made some progress in this. We have a professional learning day coming up where we have a greater level of collaboration than we've had in the past. And I think that it will be a really great and successful day. Our second area there is transitioning between programs and levels. Probably the highlight for this really is transitioning students from early childhood to kindergarten. The structures and funding for the programs for early childhood special ed and school-age special ed are very different. Sometimes students have a difficult time transitioning due to the change in support that is very high in the early childhood area. And then when they go into kindergarten, those supports are not there due to the programming that is available. So we're working on that. Finally, developing inclusive models for students and staff, really just looking at different ways that we can have kiddos together who are special education students and general education students and move back and forth together in a more natural way so that they have better experiences and more experiences with each other for both students and staff. Next slide, Colin. And then finally, as we've said, the outcomes really that we are seeing now are very good. It's, it's, you know, Special School District has a wealth of information. But in order to reach these goals that I just talked about, we also want to look at some other places. So we're going to look, take some time to look at Jackson School District in southern Missouri. Our current area coordinator with Special School District worked there for about eight or nine years. It's a very inclusive program, and it has achieved many of the things that we would like to achieve. The second one there is Children's Institute in Portland, Oregon. There are many locations that the LEAP model preschool is located, where they have the LEAP model preschool. The LEAP model preschool is, it's a philosophy where children on the autism spectrum really are learning alongside their typically developing peers. And those peers are providing a lot of guidance for them in the area of social emotional. So it really just is, it speaks to that inclusion area. And it's just a model that we would like to look at. And then finally, that University of North Carolina, Frank Porter Graham Child Development Institute is not a child development center. It's really a research hub. Lots of data and research that has come out for early childhood has come from this organization. They've got an extensive website, and we can use a lot of resources on that website.
So our task force has three meetings, scheduled meetings remaining where we're going to really dig in on these three areas where we know we have needs and identify opportunities for continual growth that we can achieve over the coming months and years to support the learning of our early childhood special education students. Any questions?
Maureen, it is always exciting every year. We have something new, we have something different to grow our kids.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just may I make a question for you? Thank you for that, Tara. How many area coordinators do we have for Lindbergh?
So that's one of the things, and I'm glad you brought this up because I meant to mention this earlier. SSD has done a lot of restructuring in terms of their leadership positions. And I think it's one of the reasons why we feel a lot of optimism for being able to use the partnership with Special School District to close some of the gaps in programming that we saw as opportunities. So while it used to be that we had a coordinator who was assigned within Lindbergh as well as four other schools, we now have a coordinator who is with us in one very small school district. So there's a lot more attention and leadership provided and a lot more partnership that's happening between the school and special school district.
But is that just at the early childhood level?
Yes.
That's what I meant, yeah. So it's not the same person for all five elementaries?
Correct. Correct. Our early childhood area coordinator works with us and with Valley Park only, and just the early childhood programs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the final section for teaching and learning. Thank you, Charlene, is investigation. Want to give you an update on our process for investigating a student information system. If you go to the next slide, Colin, you'll see that we have had Tyler SIS for, I mean, I can't even tell you how many years. I've been here a really long time. And, you know, we're used to having it, and that's great. But there's also opportunities to look at other things, and we just really have not taken the time to do that previously. This was a recommendation that came out of our assessment of technology services. So we're taking this, this year to really investigate what's out there and then look to see what other programs might align with our systems within Lindbergh. Actually, earlier this week, we had a meeting with different department leads to start developing what are the systematic needs that we need to make sure are part of a survey that we are sending out to various vendors. So we're planning on sending that survey to vendors in November. I think one of the things that's really important about our process is not only are we sending the survey to potential SIS, student information vendors, but also to our current vendors to see how they work with other student information processes. So we will go through that process over the course of this year, analyze those responses, and investigate further to make recommendations if we need to go further in evaluating a different student information system. And that is teaching and learning.
So that SIS basically is going to follow, it'll be a classic investigate, research, implement. So this is like a three-year type of process for us to go through. So with that, I'm, Joelle and Beth, we have 35 minutes left. So between the two of you, you can split that time. So if there's something that you want to make sure you cover, and the rest of it, you can put in a Friday packet to the board. So whatever slides you want to cover, but we have about 35 minutes. All right, thanks.
Okay.
Stop it.
Mine will be quick. There's really stuff to read here, a lot of tactical stuff, like Dr. Lake said. This is updates on our compass goal implement for the year. And just an overarching statement, when I walk into finance and operations, is that there has been residual impact from the pandemic. You know, so some of the things that we've been looking to put in place, you know, the economy is a little bit different with, you know, number one, this is about our district fleet management program, which we were excited about. You know, our maintenance crew in landscape are the ones that have trucks. And we've worked with enterprise, and we're going to see some operational savings. But of course, you can't get vehicles right now. So we had an implementation plan in the first year with six vehicles. And just recently, they contacted us, and we had Chevys as far as what we were going to put in place this year. We've converted to the Fords. And even if we've converted to the Fords, we still can't get delivery until April or May of next year. So a lot of things in the operational part of the district are impacted by the pandemic and supply chain. Transportation is, you know, oh, next one? Next, good. Transportation, we were just, this is a hot topic, I think, every year because it's getting our kids to school in a timely manner and then not trying not to keep them on the bus too long. So we do have established parameters in the district as far as what makes transportation efficient. We had a impact study, which seems like a long time ago now, but it was pre-pandemic. In the 1920 school year, the finance committee, advisory committee, took on a task of spending six months diving into transportation expenditures, transportation revenue, how the state funds us, what we report to the state, whether the state deems our program efficient or not efficient. Are we getting the biggest bang for our buck with transportation? New, you know, adding a route for the district is a $70,000 cost, which we just think in our mind that that's the cost of a new teacher. So we just want to be as efficient with operations as we can. That impact study ended in June of 19. And then pretty much since then, you know, next year was when COVID hit. And then next year, you know, March, we were out here in March. And then last year was the full COVID. We really haven't got to focus on enforcing those parameters that that committee approved and were brought to the board in 19. So we're hoping this year that we're going to be able to put some of those efficiency tactics in place and remind parents of what our parameters are. So some of them this year, and we are continuing the sign up to ride. We want to keep that going even after the pandemic is over. Our elementary schools really like the seating charts. That helps with discipline. And so that's something that we want to keep ongoing after we get through the pandemic. And then this year, we implemented limited ridership to students who are assigned to the bus. So that's, oh, we're going to have a slumber party on Friday. I'm going to bring five of my girlfriends home. But there's really not enough seats on the bus for five, you know, all kids, bring kids home on the bus on Friday. So we're limiting ridership to just route riders so that the bus doesn't get overcrowded. We have put into place this year some efficiencies around our activity trips at the middle school. Those are, of course, the after-school programs offered at the middle school. And we do provide transportation home for those students. This year, we have a process where the students that are staying after have to sign up by 10:00 AM. And then the first student staff takes that sign up list and then prepares a route, instead of it just being like ad hoc. In the past, it was just like, who's going to show up at the front door to get on the bus when we leave? And then there was a process of the bus driver trying to figure out which way to go and how to take kids home. So that has worked out well, and it's more efficient, more timely for students to get home after that after-school activity. Last year, we did pilot using vans. First view, I mean, first student does have vans for use in their fleet. And we wanted to see if we could use those for like smaller routes or for midday homeless. And after doing that pretty much for a year, it really is not efficient to make that happen, even though we are using them this year because we can't get taxicabs for our homeless because there's a shortage on taxi cab drivers. So it wasn't an efficient or cost-saving item, but we have put it back in place this year so that we can service our students. year so that we can service our students. Again, another area that you just can't get enough people. Next slide, Colin. Energy conservation strategies. This has been a process that has been started three years ago, really with going out and looking at energy conservation programs that are in other districts as far as efficient lighting, efficient HVAC. And Lindbergh had, of course, had a lot of older equipment, you know, hadn't put in dollars towards that. It is an expensive thing that it's one of those things that it's expensive and people can't see it, you know? So it's behind the walls or somewhere. So we went through an RFP process and interviewed a few energy management firms and companies in the St. Louis area and we selected Navitas. And then from that process, we built a program where we updated with a little over $11 million of equipment in our schools. Every building got an update except for the high school because we knew we were going to tear it up. Central office, of course, is very new, had updated programs and then Dressel was very new. So with that program, all of our systems in those buildings have been updated. Another big thing on that is that the controls in all those buildings are now all the same version or that the same, you know, they built Sapperton way back and it had a control that was 15 years old. Now all of our controls are the same and we can have much better analytics on how energy is being used within each building. So last summer, it wasn't the most recent summer, but the summer before, all of our buildings were having the work done and that's, and then last year, of course, we had COVID, so it was an odd year. Our hardware was in place and we were already saving dollars just due to the hardware being updated. This year, again, a year late from when we planned to implement, we are working with an energy manager. As part of the Navitas agreement, we get an energy manager for three years, which this person takes the analytics that they get from the systems that are installed and our utility bills and just keeps his eye on it daily about if there's weird peaks or strange things happening. Then he also worked with us to two schools since the start of the school year. We have changed their occupied and unoccupied modes from how they were set up in the past that is sparing Concord. And just with that small shift in occupied and unoccupied, which I will say this program, the HVAC system is never off. It's just, you know, either turned up or turned down depending on whether there are people in the building or not. We've seen substantial savings. The great thing about our energy manager, Roe is his name, is that he gets out in the buildings, he talks to teachers, he does some hand-on things with them. If one person continues to have the same problem, he'll go to their classrooms three days in a row and work with them to get that fixed. So I think just them understanding how their systems work and then him being able to do that with time has helped a lot. We're going to have a presentation from Roe about our building and how it works and how we can be more efficient in the next couple of weeks. So our goal with this is to add more buildings. I think at the first of the year, we're going to roll out the best practice options at other buildings and then the big idea plan is for this summer, we want to work with our principals. We know we have summer programs, we know we have things happening in our building in summer, but we want to make sure that they are planned for certain areas of the facilities. Like we don't want a room on this hallway being used and a room on this hallway being used. Let's condense all of our activities into one area for our buildings that have activities over the summer. That's when we save our biggest money. Next slide. Facility improvement. We have been just studying different practices available in the past four years. The State of Missouri statute allowed facility construction management risk and this is a type of facility improvement plan where your general contractor is really engaged early in the process. So instead of doing value engineering after something has been hard bid and then trying to cut costs, in this one, the simple thing is that we engage them early and they're involved in the design, the construction documents and doing things upfront to save us dollars. Next slide. We are looking to pilot or do an impact study and try construction management at risk on a future project. You still have to go out to bid for it and it's kind of more like an RFQ like we just did, our architects. We'll go out to bid for firms that do construction management at risk. We'll work, our architect will work closely with us on that RFQ and then we will select top firms that qualify and then have an interview session to find out which firm is going to meet our needs for the project of our choice. And then that team will work as a team, the architect, the contractor, Dr. Lake, myself, will all be at the very beginning of writing the construction documents to get the biggest bang for our buck and make sure that the design meets the needs for the district. Next slide. We also been spending time, we always spend time annually on looking at our debt management and cash flow. We've just been studying different potential ways to finance for the district. You know, last year, we talked a lot about moving bond rating agencies. That is our credit report. So when you go out to get a mortgage, you have a credit report where the district has a rating, a credit rating. And we moved our credit rating service from Moody's and Standard to Standards and Poor's because we felt that their methodology better met the school district's finances. I will tell you, most all the school districts in the State of Missouri have moved off of Moody's and onto Standard and Poor's. So that's making that official. On 11/3, we have our credit rating interview with Standards and Poor's and that's when we go over all our finances in detail and they will give us a score as far as our financial ability. And we've looked at several other options in lieu of, you know, bond issues or selling bonds. Best practice across other schools and across the nation really is just direct financing with a bank. That's an option for our future financing if we need it. And then tax anticipation borrowing. I know it's an ugly word, but it's really just a tool in somebody's toolbox. I know we've talked about what that is, is if you recall, we only get paid once a year and then we have to live on that for, you know, the rest of the year. Our fund balances are in a place where we are not going to need to borrow this, but I just want to get over the misnomer that it's a bad thing. It's a tool in your toolbox for times like this of, you know, economic concern to have a backup plan to get through payroll at your lowest point of the year. So I will keep putting that in front of you guys just so we get that misnomer of it being a bad thing. It's a good thing for finances. Next page, and that's me. Any questions?
Just curious because I don't, I'm glad we don't do it. I know it's not a bad thing, kind of like we did the substitute thing about how many districts out of the 22 St. Louis County do and don't.
In St. Louis County, the majority do, more than not.
I would say there's very few that don't, that don't use that tool to do that, but, you know, we're in a position right now.
Well, that we do not have to.
You know, as we continue to grow and add staff and, you know, and do you weigh going for a tax incentive to do that or is this a tool that you use to postpone that as well? So there's just, it's a tool.
It's more normal than it is not.
Oh, my gosh, yes. Oh, my gosh, yes.
Exactly. And I know that's been touted that we're one that hasn't done it, but it's not a bad thing. So we don't need to do it, but it's nice to have.
We don't need to do it, so we may hear that we need to do it.
It's a nice thing to have in your back pocket if, you know, a year ago, we had a major withholding from the state, you know, and they didn't pay, they paid us 50% of what they were supposed to pay us all the way up through December. You know, you just want to, you don't ever want to have where you don't have enough money in the bank. Our lowest point, of course, is the December 1 payroll is where we hit our low because usually we get a payment from St. Louis County around the second week of December and then we're good for a year. But.
And quickly on the C, Construction Manager at Risk, I want to make sure the board saw that we do have to interview in an open session. So what we most likely will do is have the board members that the board here will just do like a special session. So when we get ready for that, it will be, all we'll do is do a couple interviews and we'll do it together as long as we have four of you involved with it so we can have the quorum do the vote. So just want to make sure you guys noticed that. So Beth, you now have, unless you guys have other questions, you have 19 minutes. Joelle did actually pretty well.
I know, I was going to thank Joelle.
Because Beth always, we always say, oh, Beth, you can put that in a Friday packet.
And I know we're last and communications people are good at being concise, but we are also, we have a lot of important work to share with you and some really fun things too. So Tony Dobson's going to come up and join us for the first item and he is going to share our Compass Goal. When we met this summer as a team, we were really intentional about saying, how do we write a goal that helps us to be purposeful about getting into the classrooms and sharing the student learning experience? It's something we always want to do, but we're really good at covering ribbon cuttings and guest speakers and things like that. And we had to be really intentional about saying, how can we get into the classrooms on a weekly basis and really do this? And it's been really fun so far and exciting and I'm excited to have Tony here to share that.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for letting me come from behind the scenes to, just to tell you a little bit about how we're strategically getting out into our buildings and helping share that all of the really neat, cool things that our students, that our teachers and staff are doing, we get to see it all the time. You know, our teachers get to see it, their parents get to hear about it, but for those people that don't have a direct connection that are in our community, this is a way for us to share all of the neat things, all of the cool stories, all of the innovative things that are happening. So, you know, just to, you know, why we're doing this was to build understanding and engage, and engage the Lindbergh community in support of district initiatives, programs, and employees. So just to make those connections. And what we did was we put together a schedule. We have three people in our department and we just created a rotation. So let's get out, let's run through buildings, let's have a plan, let's be strategic when we go, let's reach out to them before we go and find out, where do I need to go? What do I need to see? Is there something cool that's happening that we really want to focus on or is it just, you know, let's pop into a couple building or a couple classrooms here, there and check out, you know, what our teachers are doing just on a daily basis? So those, so people in the community can see that and make those connections and see, so when we ask them for things and we ask for their support, they have that connection and they know what we're doing. So just some of the things that we focus on are our 4Cs, the Lindbergh Life Success Skills, some of those, you know, are our top five things that our community told us were important. So let's focus on those things. And if Colin, if you go to the next page, or the next page, this is an example of one of those things. Go ahead.
Hi, it's us again. Zan and Dawn and we're SapSecond. So I had two fifth grade students visiting my office one day and I asked them if they would be interested in creating our school podcast and probably the next day, I received an email from them with lots of ideas.
I've always watched, you know, the, all the social media like YouTube and stuff. That's always been pretty cool to me.
We want our students to know that they're not just here to sit and get instruction in our classrooms. They're here to be a productive citizen in our school, in our community eventually.
It definitely makes you feel larger than life. Like you're not really a person anymore, you're just like someone who's so many. It feels way larger than life.
Just the excitement and the passion and then talking about how they immediately went home and shared it with their families, this new project that I asked them to work on. It's been amazing.
Making a podcast sounded fun, so I was like, wow, okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Their ideas for their weekly podcast, they will share them with me and just seeing their excitement, I'm like, yes, this is why we do what we do.
It definitely makes school more fun, like when we have a voice, like we can learn what we want to learn.
I think when they understand that they truly have a voice into not only the lessons, but just how we do things at Sapperton, I feel as though that is the ultimate way that they learn best.
Colin, if you want to go ahead and go to the, to the next slide, but that's just, I mean, that happens every single day in all of our buildings and that just happened to be, I just was going to Sapperton and I asked Keisha, you know, what can I see? And she's like, I want to show you these two kids. And, you know, so I got to talk with them and we did a quick interview and it was, it's so, it's so fun to share their story and it kind of re-energizes us. It gives, it shows us why we're here and why we do the things we do. Just another example, at the high school level, this is one of the things we really wanted to focus on because as you move up, there's so many things happening at our middle schools or our secondary schools, so middle school. And then when you go up into high school, there's 20, you know, we have 2,300 students there. There's so many programs and activities and academics and courses and athletics that are happening and it's just so hard to capture all of them. But when, when we have a plan and we know what we're going to see, we can capture things like this. So this is, you know, an explanation of students and PAC. You know, what is PAC? What do kids do during PAC time? It also mentions academic networking, you know? For people that don't know what those types of programs are, it just shines some light on, these are things that we're doing, you know, why they're, why they're in place to help kids, to help get them connected with the resources that they need or just to, you know, to mingle and make friends and take time to, you know, for themselves. So Colin, if you go to the next one, another secondary example of students at sparing and a mentorship program during, during a physical education block. So eighth grade students are taking sixth graders under their wing, you know, helping them navigate a brand new school, especially during this time. So just another great, another great story and this was a video, I think best shot, right? It's not a video on here.
I did, they were line dancing, yeah. That was a lot of fun.
The kids were line dancing. So, you know, just another cool example of, of, at sparing and then Colin, if you go to the next one, another secondary one at Truman, just a ton of cool stuff happening. The bottom center one, kids are basically creating their own musicals from scratch. They're writing the scripts, they're creating the scenery, they're creating the costumes, they're writing the songs. And then they're going to put these, these performances on for their, you know, for their classmates and for their teachers. The big picture up top is really cool. Students are, students learned about prosthetic beaks from a specialist and then used a program to 3D print prosthetic beaks for birds and learned about what type of beak, if I'm this type of bird, what type of beak do I need to be able to do the things that I need to do? That's just, that's so cool. And that's, you know, that's what we get to show people. The next one, some elementary, some elementary examples, Long Elementary, you know, they read the book, The One and Only Ivan and then raised a bunch of money for the St. Louis Zoo. So, you know, not, it doesn't have to be tons of things, that's just them reading a book and then deciding that they wanted to do something to help, you know, the local zoo that we all love. The next one, go ahead, Colin, at Kennerly. So, you know, nothing extraordinary, but kindergartners in art class learning how to draw trees. We're working, our gifted program in, so pegs, doing math. And then kids working on 3D puzzles. So, you know, not podcasts and things all the time, but what are, what are our kids doing and what are our teachers helping them create? And then one more example at Dressel. Go ahead, Colin. You know, in the bottom center, kids coding robots. So, you know, coding on iPads and transferring it to a robot to make the robot do what it wants to do.
That was a kindergarten class, by the way.
That was, yeah. So kindergartners learning to code robots. So that's, that's pretty amazing. And then the kindergartners with rubber bands learning about vibration. You know, just really cool things that we, stories we get to share with our community to shine some light on what's happening in our schools, kind of to pull back the curtain and to bring them out in the front and just to showcase all the cool things that our students and staff and everybody that works here do on a daily basis. So. So, does anyone have any questions about that?
Thanks, Tony. And I would, I would echo what you said of our team. I think this has been really re-energizing. It's just so much fun. Like, we say to ourselves, I wish I could go back and learn math in fifth grade. I like how they're doing that. That was really interesting. And it helps connect us because our department, we're not educators, that's not our background, and the majority of our parents are not either, and our community members. So helping to make that connection and explain things, and sometimes we'll go and we'll see something and then we'll come back and connect with Tara's team or the principal or the instructional design coach and say, here's what I saw, am I explaining this the right way? What do we want to highlight here? And so it's been a really, it's been really fun so far, and we're looking forward to seeing what we can do across the course of the year. Thanks, Tony. Send you back to the live stream. All right, we are going to move along. I, I have eight minutes. So this is another exciting compass goal for us this year. We are working with the high school athletics department to really design a logo. This says logo redesign, but really the athletics program does not have a logo, and that's the issue. And so our why for this is to really create, there's so much energy and support and spirit around Limburg High School Athletics, and we want to create a logo that reflects that. We want a logo that will last us for decades and really be dynamic and exciting, and we want to engage our entire community in that process. So go ahead and the next slide, please, Colin. I want to bring you up to speed quickly on the work that we've done to lead up to this in the communications department. Last year, Tony and our team worked on developing brand guidelines for the Flyers Athletics Program, including our colors, our fonts, really everything except for the logo, although we created standards for the Arch and the Plane logo. And so if you look to the next slide, we just have some examples of how that branding has worked across the different platforms that we've created. Our next slide is the Limburg High School Athletics website, so you can see those consistent fonts and colors. You see our Arch and Plane logo, and then we'll go to the next slide. And that is our, the Facebook page. If you look at the next slide, we have a screenshot of our YouTube channel, just the same look and feel across the board. And then one more slide here, wanted to show you a screenshot of the Flyers Athletics app. So the one thing that we, through all of this, have felt the need for and really talked to Scott and his team about is redesigning and making a really great logo. So the next slide is from our brand standards guideline. This is what we have been able to create, is how to correctly use the Limburg Flyers logo and how to not use it. This is in our district brand standards as well. And then if you look to the next slide, this slide is the perfect example of why we need to do this work, because when no logo exists, our teams, they, they create their own logo and, and they, they should. You know, they want to have that brand and identity. And so as you can see, over the years, our various athletic teams have come up with quite a variety of logos. We have different colors, different fonts. Sometimes we have the Arch and Plane, sometimes we have an F, sometimes we have a bird. So there is a lot going on here. And our goal is to, like I said, create a consistent logo and then, over time, roll it out. So as we have our uniform purchasing cycle, as we're replacing things on our normal course of budget and looking ahead, that we are incorporating that new logo. So go to the next slide, please. Then we'll look at the timeline, and again, working with the athletics department to roll this out. Quarter one of this year, we've been researching this process with other school districts. We've been talking with school districts that have redesigned or designed a logo and gathering information from them, and that's been a really helpful process. Next quarter, we are going to form the committee that would have representation across the high school community and our district community. That would include coaches, parents, our student athletes, alumni, administrators. And I will say, the athletics department has in large part formed this committee, and we've added a couple people on, so we're moving right along on that process. And then we'll be developing the request for qualifications for a graphic designer to bring them on board. We would, our goal is to have that committee be meeting right after the holidays in the third quarter, getting feedback, having some focus groups and learning about what, what does the Flyers' identity mean? What, what do we think about when we think about athletics? And then what kind of logo do we want to have? What, what characteristics are important to us? And then, so that we can come up with a couple of options, and then in the last quarter of the year, we can finalize that logo so we can roll it out over the summer. And I wanted to add on here as well, because I do think it's an important point, we've been working with community ed and rec as they develop new programming, and they're wanting to design logos for their programming as well. So once we establish that logo and identity for the high school, there's opportunities there to extend that to other programming and really make everyone, everything a reflection of that, of that brand. So any questions on that timeline or on the process?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So for the design committee, it talks about student athletes, and I'm just wondering if any time throughout the process, if it opens up to all students? And since it's still a part of like their school and their community and like creating that sense of belonging, if it's something that the student population in general will have an input on at any point?
Yes, that's a great question, important question. And I think the committee's there to guide us, and then once we have a couple options that for our entire high school community and all the students to weigh in on, that's going to be really important. We've said, we've been saying, as we prepare for this process, if the students don't like it and they don't get excited about it, then it's not an effective logo for us. And so that's really, it's really important to get their buy-in and, and their support. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay.
Did you do good?
I have two more things.
Okay.
In three minutes. All right. This summer programming, so our parent leadership group gave us some really helpful feedback last year, and as a parent myself, I could definitely relate and understand the importance of that. They said, we love for our kids to participate in Limburg Summer Camps and programs and enrichment and all of these things, but we don't always get the information in time. Like, we've planned out our whole summer and it's late or we don't know where to find it. And can we get a better system for letting our families know about things that are going on in the summer so we can participate? And I, I said, yes, absolutely, let's make that a goal. So if we look at the next slide, that is our why. To serve our families well, to increase participation in our programs, to communicate better about this. So our goal is to create kind of a one-step home for all of our summer programming, whether that's summer school, camps, enrichment, high school athletic clubs, bring it all together, and then communicate it out early. So we're looking at February to communicate all of this out with families, at least get them basic information about where to go for more information. And we started that work this summer. We brought together the leaders of all the different groups, and we had a meeting to just give them an idea of this plan, tell them what we need from them as far as communication. And then we'll be sending out a Google form here in the next couple of weeks to get all of that camp information and start to gather it. And then we can put it together into a format that's easy to digest, easy to find programming. Community ed and rec already does an excellent job of this, and we're going to let them keep doing what they do, but incorporate it into our platform so it's, it's there in the same place as well. But we're kind of modeling ourselves after what's already being done over there. So, any questions? No questions? Okay, last one, my last item. This is our fun investigate. The fall of 2024 is Limburg Schools' 75th anniversary as a school district. As you know, our district was formed in 1949, so we're excited to, to celebrate that, and we want to just look around at other districts that have had some major milestones and see how have they celebrated that? What has that involved in the community, with the district? I know we have, the city of Crestwood is celebrating a big milestone next year, and so we can look at their celebration and see if there's anything we can learn from that. But looking at other school districts, too, and how we can bring our community in. So that's one of our investigates. And then related to that, looking at people who have opened new high schools in recent years, and how do we plan successfully for that so we include everybody who needs to be included in our special events and our grand opening and ribbon cutting and all of those things? So that'll be a lot of fun. Any questions?
It's 6:30. By the way.
We have a remark. Hang on.
Brian was the one that was long-winded today.
Important information, but Beth, I was just going to say, for the 50th anniversary celebration, great Janet Chamia, I remember it was a classy event. I still have wine glasses that are etched from that night, so it was, was really neat. So I don't know if you can find notes on the 50th celebration for our district, but...
I believe probably Mary Meyer helped plan a lot of that.
Yes, she did.
So I can get in touch with her and probably get a lot of information. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you to everybody who presented. So go to 5.0, which is adjournment, to have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop number 1540.
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second.
Second.
Second by Megan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Being adjourned.